So you say nine to five or?
Yeah, right.
So I run a
Be careful what you say here now being your core
Construction group.
Yeah.
Out of Montpelier.
Yeah.
Because I start like this morning, I start my mornings at four.
Yeah.
And this is the earliest I've ever been home.
Yeah.
I am a
Yeah.
Sat, I work.
I
I enjoy it.
Yeah, right.
It's comfortable.
That's right.
It's right, it's secure. I tell I know what I'm doing.
And it's my safe, it's like my
Sanity.
Safe space, right?
Yeah.
It's like, it's like everything outside of there is out of my control. I have some control over what happens inside of it, so
I was headed in, it was Sa- Saturday mornings, you can find me there till about noon. I was headed in one Saturday morning, somebody from the office called and wanted to know, can we do X, Y, Z? And I said, sure. They said, where are you headed? I said, headed to the office. If you need something, give me a call.
Yeah.
So you stopped, that was the question. You stopped and I used the same word, just you. I said, actually, it's kind of my safe space.
Yeah.
And I kind of just Yeah. I'm able to sit back, I've got projects, I got stuff I'm doing and I just do it.
And it's what you love to do.
Yeah.
And so that's it. It's like some people go play golf.
Yeah.
You know, so it's
Yeah.
Absolutely. What's the name of the company in Montpelier?
Associated General Contractors.
Yeah, see trucks.
Of Vermont, we
See the trucks are
I represent two hundred and fifty different construction guys from across the state. Everything from the big friggin stupid ones
Yeah.
The little crazier ones.
Yeah. The real hustlers.
Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah, it's a, it's been, this project's been really eye-opening, but also I used to really kind of not cater to the people as much. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I used to be pretty egotistical about it. Just like, this is what, this is what we serve.
Yeah.
If you don't like it, you can find somewhere else to eat or drink, right?
Yeah.
This project's been a lot more like listening to what the people want and giving what they want and it's actually made my life a lot less stressful.
I was one of the original
John and David
Dave is not, John's gonna try and call in.
Jack, yeah. It was Jack's backyard and Mary.
Lydia said she'd be here.
It's an institution.
I went from there to with Danny Lazard.
Yeah, I know Danny.
Nantucket.
Yeah.
And then Jack and Danny and I opened Texas up in Burlington.
Yeah.
So yeah.
Did you call me?
Yeah. I mean, I was in Montpelier.
You called me, left a message.
Winuski.
Is East Street?
Did it all over the state.
Is East Street?
Different markets, different size markets.
That's fine.
Different, different rigmarole.
Nothing, nothing funny.
Talking about soon.
Running a, and, and I was that guy running a bar in Burlington on the bottom of Church Street. And you talked about, this is what we got. If you don't like it, just
Yeah.
Move on.
That's right.
Doesn't matter.
That's right. That's right. Winuski was like that. Our bar in Winuski was, and still there, like all the bars that I opened are still
Yeah.
Which I think is, it's testament to something, you know? Even though I don't own them anymore, they're still, they're still open. The Winuski project was, was wild because the city was in quite a flux of construction and it seems like that city's always changing the way that they look and and so it was a real chore the first year to just get it to a spot where it was stable.
Yeah. No, and that, you fight that when we were in Rutland, we were fighting that constantly.
Yeah. Who else has joined us there?
Well, Dave is not gonna be here, John's gonna try and call in, and then there's Lydia and Mary.
Okay.
And they're the ones with questions. And we'll go through this drill, we won't have a quorum. And that's when I just take a noose and hang myself and see if I can all Is there a reason we've got a 2022 liquor license here?
Ken said that was, that was the original granting and then I guess we've, he said we've been just using that throughout. Okay. Erin wants to move along at four thirty. Can I tell her that's, that's happening? Any idea?
If we don't have a quorum, nothing happens. You can go home, you'll be home by four ten.
Okay.
We'll give them a few minutes, but
You drive that sweet car all around town.
Which one?
Yeah, right. I've seen you a few. The black one's really nice.
Yeah.
What year is that?
Fifty-four.
Beautiful car.
Yeah.
Sounds great coming up the hill.
I've had it for thirty-eight years.
That's amazing. Were you like, did you know who owned it before you or?
Yeah. A lady in oh god. Right on the mass, you know, New Hampshire border.
Hmm.
She bought it brand new in nineteen eighty-six or nineteen, nineteen eighty-seven. She passed away. And her grandson inherited the car. And he went out and took a loan against it. Didn't pay the loan, so I went down and paid the loan.
So she bought it in eighty-something?
No, she bought it in fifty-four.
All right, she passed in eighty-six, yeah.
She passed away in eighty?
Away in eighty-six.
And her grandson inherited it. He went out and took out a six hundred dollar loan against it, was in the loan sharks. Didn't pay the bill.
Wow.
And I heard the guy and I went down and paid the six hundred dollars, bought the car home.
And that's pretty good. How do you hear about something like that?
You just have to keep your ears open.
I appreciate that so much, yeah. Yeah, hey, if you keep your ears open and find a sixty-five Continental, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm thinking, I've been looking at the fifty-four Pontiac, but I'm not sure.
That's what Bro, that's what Bruce, he really wants, fifty-five Pies, what he's been looking for.
Yeah.
He goes to those auctions out of White River, so.
Wait till me if I buy another car, I'd have to live in it.
Here we go. Well, the weather looks great for Saturday. Looks sunny, which is good because our last party was of DeLuise.
You've done this before.
Our last one that we just had.
Oh, right.
You know, we throw four of these a summer. You know, and it's just more of like a heavier promotions to get people to come. But
Is that John calling in? Do I press this?
No, it should, we don't, we shouldn't have to do anything, but I've never seen
John, you calling in?
I'm calling in because the tablet doesn't work.
Well, thank you very much for that effort. We are waiting for, John, um, Dave is not gonna be here, work got in his way. We're waiting for a quorum with Lydia and Mary. We just need one. And in the room is the applicant, Richard Wabi, and our trusted friend, you can guess.
Scott Carter?
Every, who makes every meeting, gives us cookies.
I got, I got an old four Mr. Dishi Spider convertible. Just never seen salt.
Where do you keep that?
In, in the winter, it's just a garage
Yeah.
On, on, on a park.
Yeah.
Because if you, you park your car on concrete
Yeah.
They rock.
They do rock.
Moisture. And the concrete causing the rock.
Yeah.
So it just sits on
The spider.
Fun.
It's a fun car to drive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been there for nineteen years.
Nice.
Have you looked at those clipped together plastic floors?
No.
They could sit, they sit right on the concrete, but they have a breathable
Yeah, you put a, you put this, I've got two of them, but you put this foam pad a quarter inch
Yeah.
Or eighth inch foam thing through and then there's these one by one
Yeah.
Squares.
Yeah.
And they're they're relatively inexpensive.
Yeah.
And you just clip them together, you can get them in different colors, put different patterns. I got one that's a checkered flag. I got another one that's just gray with a red, couple red squares.
Dave is not gonna be here, I have John online, he called in.
It keeps from half of
So we have a quorum.
Just what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right, we've got a quorum for the meeting, let the meeting reveal. Roll call is Lydia, Charlie, and John has called in. Are you still there, John?
Yes, I am.
All right, great. Uh, the agenda is public participation scheduled. Scott, current of Good Measure wants to block off East Street and for the twenty-first of June. Scott, we discussed this last meeting and there was some board questions, so we'll let the board ask the questions. What questions do you have, John?
What time is he gonna close it?
Uh, we don't start our event until eleven thirty and so I think the plan is to start shutting it down around ten AM.
From ten to eleven thirty?
No, it would be
Is that right?
It would be from ten until eight PM.
Ten till eight PM.
Ten till eight PM. And are there gonna be signs to show people where to get to?
Yes, there will be signs to direct traffic around the bank for anybody who lives up on Turkey Hill or King Street.
Or anybody wants to go to the pool.
Or anybody, that's right, the pool opens that weekend, so yes. I can add, I can add pool to my list of signs.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Uh I don't know where all the noise is in the background, but
We're sorry, we don't hear it.
All right. Let me get I'm gonna get Carolyn and hold on.
Okay.
No, I cannot get logged in. I'm on my phone, I'm going outside. Okay, so we need to check on your iPad. All right.
So John, we'll let Lydia start asking any questions that she's got if you're finished.
I'm finished now.
All right.
I had to get up. We're calling from McDonald's in Moorfield, West Virginia.
Thanks, John, for calling in from afar.
You made the quorum, John.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I guess first off, just like a comment, and this is for us as the board, it's just like, we need to be more clear with folks like what information we want when they're requesting stuff, so like a description of the event, the times. Obviously, it was awesome. We reached out to all the emergency services, that stuff's on point. And just like, a little more notice would be great, then we aren't rushing at the end, but that's not on you, that's like we should have sound like, we want to receive requests for something like this.
Two bucks in advance.
Yeah, something like that. That gives everybody time, gives people a chance to ask questions.
Yeah.
But that's just like, we can learn and improve and that's not, anybody's definitely not your fault. So my general question is the time was one of them, and if you could just provide a description of the event and why closing down the road is important for it.
Sure, I think that, well, the timing of the event, we open at eleven thirty. We have a live band playing and it's kind of a large band, so that's kind of the first reason why even wanting to do something like this is to create a little bit more space for them as well as a little bit more space for guests because we, we are expecting quite, quite a big crowd of people that day, so just to give people a little bit more, so it's not so crammed. And so, you know, the band I have playing from four PM to seven PM. And so that's why I said till eight PM because I feel like, you know, we need at least an hour for shutdown. You know, the entire plan on the shutting down of the street was to run snow fencing on stanchions, I think I said this in the proposal. And so those would be able to, right when the music ended even kind of fold, fold in and traffic to that and kind of open back up.
Yeah.
One, one lane.
Yeah.
But we're realistically gonna close it like to where our parklet extends to, so realistically, two lanes would be a little bit better.
Really, I don't know if you can mute John until he wants to speak?
Let's see, uh, that is probably Carolyn and mute is, what do I do, press on her button or her picture?
There's like a
There's a mute, I got it, all right.
Yeah, we just have to check back in in case
Right.
They actually wanna say something, we're not, we're not muting them permanently. And then you almost brought up one of my questions, which is like, we're expecting more people than normal. And this is again, sort of a joint, the town shares responsibility as well, like, is parking going to be an issue? Can we, can you direct any of the people who are coming to park in certain areas? I don't know whether your social media can do that or is it even really gonna be an issue?
When we're talking about closing the street, we're only really talking about three more parking spots.
Oh yeah, that I don't think is gonna take parking, it's the people, all the people coming.
Yeah.
That sounds like it could be a larger
That's not, for me, that's not, like, we're bringing people to Northfield.
Right.
They're gonna find a place to park.
But if we said like, hey, could you encourage people to park somewhere?
Hundred percent.
You could send that message.
I could do an aerial map and have people
Yeah.
And put it on our social media and have them
That's what I mean, like a share.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got a question. I don't know if I can ask it or not.
Probably going through the board questions first and that would be
What I wanted to ask, I missed that.
Good question and
So we had a construction project that closed East Street down for two days. Was there any problem using Northfield Savings Bank going up Turkey Hill and King Street during that time?
Uh, we did not have any issues, no complaints.
And that was for two, that was for sixteen hours, two days, eight hours apiece, right?
I also think there might be, it might actually
I get your music, John. There was background noises.
Then to have all that extra
Yeah.
And have traffic going. Go ahead.
Dave did send me a quick question about liability for the town. And there are, basically there are roads through there, there's easements that allow for the public to come off this street or Kent Street and go down through it. So they're like public roads going through the parking lot, so I just wanna, Dave did ask about town's liability. So again, it's like there's easements that allow public access through the property, similar to a road.
Dave also said he couldn't attend the meeting, but he says he's not in favor of using private property for traffic, also concerned about turning radius, pedestrian traffic, et cetera. Have, have a party at Memorial Park, and then he went back to work. So Lydia, have anything else? John, do you have anything else?
No, I don't know anything else.
All right, Richard, Richard Wabi, Shannon Pallone is here and
So my, I, I've got four things. I think it's great what you're doing. I just wanna make sure the town doesn't accept a great deal of responsibility for this, so you mentioned the detour, great idea. There is a highway standard for that. It's under Muti T eight twenty that if you're gonna create a detour, whether it's between private space or public space it has to be set up like that or the town accepts responsibility for it.
Got it.
Okay?
Yeah. I took pictures, I'm, sorry to cut you off, I did take pictures when the construction team had, had closed off the street. So the plan was to just follow what they did.
Similar signs.
Yeah.
That's all you need.
Great.
You have to ensure because of parking constraints, that emergency vehicles can actually make it through the back parking lot.
I don't want them to. I have, I have the ambulance squad scanner. So the plan is that the, the walls will fold into that, so if there is anything on King Street or there is anything on, on Turkey Hill, then we'll be ready for it and you will fold in the wall so the emergency vehicles can get through.
You mentioned you have a large number of people anticipated?
You never know, but yes.
Would it behoove you to have emergency services or safety on hand?
We're not talking about more than, we're not talking about more than two hundred people, so I don't
Other big events, they require that?
Right, we're, we would be under the threshold of, I think it's five hundred is when you need an ambulance squad. So we're way under that.
Your restaurant license requires a certain number of bathrooms per thing and you're gonna exceed that. Are you bringing porta toilets in for the additional folks?
We have the coffee shop and the tasting room, two separate wastewater permits, a separate wastewater permit. But we have enough wastewater between the two buildings, we have four bathrooms to hold at least three hundred people, I think is our number.
So you are gonna have more than three hundred people.
We can't fit in.
And you're shutting down the street.
I mean, we're shutting down the street to give people room and to
Potentially you could have five hundred.
I, I, well
But that's fine, I'm just saying.
That would be a great
Most events happening.
Yes.
Whether it's in Northfield or any other place, you would require portal safety to be there and you would require porta toilets. My last one in answer to help with your question is, as part of this piece, could you incorporate in it during the hours of ten till eight? That the other businesses in town are allowed to do thirty-minute parking in front of their businesses?
Yeah.
Three or four spaces, that would give them
That would require an ordinance and we're not ready to do that.
Um, I'm just asking as part of this permit, the other businesses, you don't affect their financial day, the whole day. You don't affect that. You could incorporate in this with the amendment out here, that the other businesses are allowed to have a thirty-minute or a short-term parking piece.
We can say it, but we can't enforce it.
But I did ask you to enforce it.
Well, what, so we put the word out, you know, we didn't put signs up, but what's, what's that mean? You gotta leave the party
If you put a sign in front of somebody's business that says thirty-minute parking, people will naturally move. Or they won't park there to begin with. It'll at least give them a chance. Otherwise, you're gonna kill all, with two hundred people coming into Northfield, you're gonna kill all of Northfield for the day. Everybody might as well
I think there's a good chance that two hundred people coming actually increases business for some of the other businesses.
No, it doesn't, he's serving food, he's serving alcohol. Don't fool yourself.
Well, that's a good point, but we don't, we're gonna have to make a decision on the closing of East Street, letting this happen, and if the lessons learned says that we need to incorporate your ideas, we'll incorporate your ideas.
So my questions were, because that's the day the pool opens.
Yeah, right, it's bad, bad timing.
Yeah, it is, and so that means everybody has to come through the Northfield Savings Bank and then up, up the hill. But a lot of people don't know, and depending on the detour sign and depending the parking, and that was my thing, can the ambulance get
Yes.
Through?
Hundred percent.
And that was the thing, you know, whether I have, I mean, that doesn't mean Megan's not gonna park it up there anyway, because, you know, it's the first day. But that's my concern is that the ambulance can't get up through if you close, I mean, it's already tight coming through with, with the benches and stuff there, and then if you totally close it, I don't know if we would lose parking, I mean people, because they, a lot of people know that they can come through the savings bank, but that was my concern was the you know, the ambulance being able to get through up there.
Before you showed up, we did talk about heavy, like the, the detour signage will be very clear about any traffic for King Street and Turkey Hill will go through the, the bank parking lot. And we'll add pool, you know
Okay.
Northfield Pool Detour Signs as well.
Okay.
And you were here for the collapsible barricade, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure how they, how you're gonna move that many people that fast, but you know.
It's a loud siren.
Yeah, oh, it is a loud, I know.
It's a loud siren and we have two security guards on each pole, so they are gonna be able to it's on, it's basically a pole in concrete, you know, five gallon bucket attached to self fence and, and we just pull this in. We'll move, we'll move people quick to that front.
Charlie, are you able to mute again or?
I'm gonna mute you, John. We got, we got background noise.
You got it, Charlie?
Yeah. It's a, and
The plastic ball pit at the McDonald's is getting a little rocky. But I, um, just to go back to one of the, one of the things that you were talking about, I think we, we make an extra handicap sign for the closer to the crosswalk just to allow extra handicap parking whenever we do an event like this. But I'm also more than willing to make a sign, not gonna say that it's gonna work, but make a sign for the laundromat and, and put that in two spots to this side of, of our barricade. Which was definitely, which would be nice, because I mean, I, I understand that like our parklet is, is special, like our park, being able to use it, it doesn't, it doesn't it, it doesn't fall on me in a very soft way, like it's, it's really great that we get to do it, but and, and I know John and, and I know he had a hard time during COVID when we had a lot of spots and we kind of gotten it down where we're in a good relationship, and so, you know, having signs like laundromat only parking, we can do that, no, no problem. And that allows, you know, for, that's the traffic that parks on the street, right? It's coffee shop, which I own, and they're obviously fine with what I'm doing. And then the church, which is Sunday.
But it's not your street I'm, I'm talking about, it's a cone shop over here.
And it's also the pizzeria, because that, it's all gonna go all the way around, but common, you know it is.
And the pharmacy, if they could just, for that day, whether you wanna look the other way or not if they could just put out a thirty-minute parking in a cone for three or four spaces
Yeah, for the sense of pharmacy on it.
That would help those people, and I know it's not enforceable, I've played this game for years, but
Where would be the, if we were gonna make a, if the town was gonna make us say, the parking area, we want to encourage, and then Scott posted on his social media, would it be the far side of the common and the Legion? Is that where we'd wanna encourage people?
I, I would think, since it's on a Saturday, I would think that behind the Legion would be a good place to park. And then you cross the tracks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I could call, I could talk to Glenn and Martha, I could also talk to the folks that run the Gray Building, I mean, they have plenty of parking on a Saturday and they get that that's also keeps people from crossing traffic, right? Because that's
Well, if it gets to be wound up, you got parking on the other side of the track, so you can just have your guys direct prep.
And this isn't like an all at once, and it's not an all-day event, right? Like this is not like a, people are gonna be coming and going, so I think the traffic pattern, and we've thrown this part, the same party the same amount of people for the last three years, and so, you know, the only difference is we're spending extra money to have this full band play on a day, in an afternoon, and so we just wanted to give people more space and to be perfectly honest, I, I love the picture of it, right? Like we're gonna use this picture to promote our town. We're gonna use this picture of people being out on the street to promote our business, and so the, you know, we're, we're doing this to kind of add a little grandiose note to what, what we've done and to celebrate our eight years of being a business, you know?
Hillary?
I have a comment at this line.
That's very unusual. Are you well?
I'm very happy.
This, this little rain or shine.
Yeah, it is rain or shine. I mean, if it's raining, this is a mute point. In my mind, we won't, we'll, we'll just fold everything in and stick to where our footprint but it looks like it wants to, so.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, very good. Hearing that, we'll move on to the select board action item on this. Do I have a motion to approve the East Street closure request from Good Measure?
So moved.
So moved.
So moved and seconded, all right, here, the motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the exclusion of East Street parking on the twenty-first of June, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, are there any objections or objections? I've watched The eight ayes have it, are there any objections or objections? I watched all your mouths move, so I know the motion's been approved. Have a good party. Thank you, John, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, that was easy, no objections, thanks, John, have a good McDonald's.
Thanks, John.
Later, man.
Thanks, Carolyn.